Before meeting, I've asked Commissioner Bennett if he would lead us in this prayer.
Lord Jesus, we come to you in humility and faith, Lord. And, Lord, we just thank you for all you do for us each and every day, Lord. And we thank you for the blessings that you bring into our life each and every day, Lord, and pray that you will continue to bless us. Lord, we want to thank you for all the men and women that fight, fought for our freedoms and have died, paid the ultimate price, Lord. And we want to thank you for the ones today that continue to fight for our freedoms. If it wasn't for those, Lord, we just, it wouldn't be the life we live here on earth. Lord, we want to thank you for all our first responders, all the many, many, the firemen, the EMSs, the law enforcements, our National Guards, everyone in this country that just puts the first foot forward to help us, most than a lot of them lead us, even our spiritual leaders. We want to thank you for those too, Lord Jesus. Lord, we want to thank you for our county here in Hart County, it's a great place to live, and all the people here that make our wheels go around each and every day. It's a job, and, Lord, we just pray that you'll be with us tonight as we conduct county's business and go forward with it. And, Lord, and please give us mercy in our travels to get back home from this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or watching by HTC Channel 3 or on our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We welcome everyone. Now we move on to approve the agenda. We got any additions?
I have one addition. Authorized Chairman and myself to sign the engagement letter for this 25 audit with Birch, Crings and Company, our auditors. Put that under 13.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. That's five of the vote. All right, we'll move on to minutes of the September night meeting. Any additions or corrections to those?
I make a motion and we approve the 9:25 regular minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. That's five of the vote. We'll move on to remarks by invited guests. We do have Ms. Terry Partain here, the Executive Director of Hart, of our IBA, and she's going to give us a report.
Thank you guys for having me. I sent in a request last week. For those of you who know, we celebrate Manufacturing Week from October 3rd through October 10th all across the United States. And this year, I thought it will be, the IBA thought it would be fitting if we ask you guys to do a proclamation for Manufacturing Week. And I wanted to share, I know you guys probably know the importance of manufacturing in Hart County, but just to make sure those listening from home and who are here from the public realize the impact that manufacturing and industry make in our county might be helpful. So, just a few numbers. For Hart County, we actually have over 30% of our workforce in manufacturing. That's about 3,200 jobs in our county. By comparison, only about 10% of all of the jobs in the state of Georgia as an entirety are manufacturing. So, we are about three times up the traditional rate in our county. And we just want to recognize that industry fuels economic growth across our region and especially in our community. The average wages for manufacturing are anywhere from 60,000 to 70,000, depending on which report you pulled for Hart County in our region. So, they're well above some of our other sectors. And capital investment has been now over about $1.5 billion from industry just in the last 10 years alone here in our county. Manufacturing in our community partners with our College and Career Academy and with us at the IBA to provide students with a lot of opportunity locally so that they don't have to leave our community if they choose not to. That can be with or without college education, and often that college education can be paid for should they decide to partner with our manufacturer. So, with that in mind, we are kicking off Manufacturing Week, October 3rd, next Friday, with a manufacturing appreciation reception here at the Adult Learning Center from 1:30 to 3:30. I encourage you all to come, and actually the public's invited. We're encouraging students to attend. Unfortunately, it falls during our fall break for the, for the school system, but it was just kind of the way we had to schedule it. So, but we are encouraging everyone to attend. We are offering vendor tables to our industry partners to highlight them. Often, we hear a lot of impacts they make, but we don't often hear of the positive impacts they make in a community. So, it's the public's opportunity to come out and meet and greet our industry partners. We have seven or eight confirmed at this time. And the goal is to showcase modern manufacturing. A lot of times when people think about manufacturing jobs here, Tencos comes to mind. Tencos was a fantastic company for a very long time, but if you had friends, family, or, you know, knew someone that worked there, worked there yourself, our modern manufacturers look very different when you walk through their doors. Unfortunately, I can't take everyone on industry tours. I wish I could. You would have a whole new appreciation for it. But we're working on that with our students. But the goal of this event is just to kind of have a glimpse into what they do, the products they make, and kind of meet and greet with our industry partners and see the positive sides of what they offer, showcase opportunities and employment. So, with that in mind, I would ask that you consider the proclamation for Manufacturing Week.
I was marking my calendar for October, October 3rd. Okay, I'll read the proclamation here right quick. Proclamation commemorating Manufacturing Week in Hart County, Georgia, October the 3rd through the 10th, 2025. Whereas manufacturing plays a vital role in the economic strength and prosperity of Hart County, providing high-quality jobs, fostering innovation, and contributing significantly to the community's growth and resilience. And whereas Hart County is home to a diverse array of manufacturing whose dedication, ingenuity, and investment have helped position our region as a hub of industrial excellence in the state of Georgia. And whereas the hard-working men and women in the manufacturing sector exemplify the values of craftsmanship, productivity, and perseverance, and their efforts deserve recognition and celebration. And whereas Manufacturing Week provides an opportunity to highlight the importance of manufacturing to our local economy, inspire future generations to pursue careers in the industry, and strengthen partnerships between businesses, educators, and the community. And whereas Hart County remains committed to supporting workforce development, technical education, and innovation to ensure the continued success of our manufacturing sector. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hart County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd through October the 10th, 2025, as Manufacturing Week in Hart County, Georgia, and encourages all citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions of our local manufacturers and the opportunities they create for our community. Proclaim this 23rd day of September, 2025. Can we get a motion to adopt this proclamation? We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. That's five of it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Terry.
And then while I was here, I thought I would save a trip for you guys for December. So, I will give you a very quick and short, concise annual update, just to see what IBA has been up to for the last year. October 1st will be my one-year anniversary in the role. So, I know Dwayne and I, I think we came in December last year. This report may look a little bit different. It's going to cover the overall contributions, which we kind of just covered in, in our request. But I did want you to see what we've been doing since we were here last year. All right, so most of you, as far as the Board of Commissioners know, but just for the public and for anyone else here, Hart County Industrial Building Authority was formed in 1961. It's a constitutional authority. We exist, our, our purpose is to create quality jobs, investment, and wealth in Hart County for the benefit of our residents and those citizens in our surrounding region. We receive funding through SPOST, Hart County Board of Commissioners, and fees obtained through issuance of bonds and lease agreements. We focus on four priority areas: attraction and recruitment of industry and business, product development, which in our case is often dirt and land in our industrial parks, existing industry support, and workforce development. And those two have been a huge focus for the last year and moving forward. So, just some things that we've done in the last year to, for, under attraction and recruitment. I've actually worked six active projects. Four of those were state RFIs directly from our state partners. And four site visits were hosted for this year. As we often say, we are seeking desirable industry that does not compete with who we have as industry partners already, but would complement what we have in Hart County. We're currently updating our website. I was hoping to have that to show tonight, but it'll probably be another week or so before we have that. If you had got to see a little bit and pieces of it from our IBA meeting last night, it's looking really great. We're excited about that. We've done some branding and rebranding through Archway with the community, along with the city and the county, the chamber. Multiple, multiple entities took part in that, so you can see our new logos. We've updated property listings for available land. We currently have about 130 acres still left in our Gateway III industrial park. And in that is about a 20.6 or so acre pad-ready site that we market. We're looking at a nine-acre reserves for commercial and retail development at the Gateway Industrial Parks. That's probably going to be our next anticipated project that we're working on. So, we have completed initial engineering and concepts for that, what that might look like. We're still unsure, but no decisions have been made, but that's what's being looked at right now. We offer granite support for several industry partners, Harry, Lindy Veman, and Nestle Perina this year. We also could add, and you'll see it in another slide, Livonia, the city of Livonia, to help them on the sewer project that they, they were in the middle of, that affected Gateway III as well. And then last year, Day One, attended the annual JDA presentation for state project managers in Atlanta. And I just added some pictures so you didn't have to hear me talk the whole time. If anyone hasn't seen this, this is at our Gateway Industrial Park, Gateway Number One. And these are some of our oldest existing industry partners, which is Fenner Dunlop and T.I. Automotive. Under product development, we did a complete tree thinning at the Gateway III property. That was done this year. The sewer infrastructure upgrade of our own Jifa grant that we were working with the Water and Sewer Authority in the county has now been closed. So, that is over and done. And then we updated, of course, we're in the middle of updating covenants and restrictions for what will be our commercial and retail property. And again, if you're looking at this, these were original concepts that were done for us by Archway a long time ago. Our Gateway Industrial Park doesn't look exactly like the picture you see, but it's pretty close. It's the concepts we go by. And then the other picture is our 20.6 or so acre pad-ready site. Under existing industry support, we actually had over 95 jobs created by existing industry partners. There may be more, but those are from who reported. So, they are, they are going strong. There are a couple that are very interested in expanding, but we haven't made those announcements just quite yet. I visited industry 26 times, and that was over 14 industries. And then we offered quarterly industry events this year, including Industry Roundtable, a workforce summit slash task force, which was in partnership with Archway, and an industry executive summit. All were well-attended. Many of you in the room came, so we appreciate that support. We completed some success story videos. We were trying to figure out how to promote our work-based learning students with an education industry partnership. So, we went into Fabritex, Herring Precision, and Lindy Veman, and actually filmed some of their young leaders in those companies who came from our work-based learning program. Some completed apprenticeships, you know, in Germany and out of the country. Others were just industry leaders within the company. So, that was done, and we used that in multiple ways. Then we hosted several, several industry tours and delegations that came into Hart County requesting to see certain industry partners. We are definitely being looked at for our existing industry and the success that we have seen for the last 10 to 15 years here. So, under that, we had a VIP event back in the spring. It was actually the Counselor Corps of International Delegates from the State Department of Economic Development. We have hosted state project managers. We've hosted directors from the Georgia Center of Innovation and from the Georgia International Trade Partners Director as well. And those are just some pictures. The picture on the left is the industry executive event that we hosted, the VIP event, with our Counselor Corps of International Delegates is in the middle, and the Industry Roundtable is the top right. Our workforce development efforts, we partner, we collaborate a lot with resource partners and education partners, industry partners alike for these efforts. But we have formed the Hart County Workforce Summit and Task Force. That is a very strategic effort, again in partnership with Archway, but it covers all sectors in the county. But we are working on talent pipeline, workforce awareness, and industry and business relations. So, it's very targeted and very specific, and we've got a great core group of people that show up for those monthly meetings and are really putting forth a lot of effort, including both education and industry partners. We're hosting a Monthly Workforce Wednesday where we are working on upscaling sessions for those either unemployed or looking for work. And then I've participated in several regional and state leadership roles, conferences, all of those. I won't bore you, but they are listed on your papers if you're interested. I am now serving on the GMRC Workforce Development Board and am almost completed with, I've been taking classes all year for the UGA certification for economic developers. I'll have about two classes left, so I should graduate that in 2026. And then community engagement, we participated in the Ag Legislative Update, the Ag Expo, and I've been guest speakers at places like Rotary, Kiwanis. I even spoke, I was asked to speak at Athens Area Home Builders this year. The work with the College and Career Academy is probably the most rewarding, if I had to tell you, in workforce development. We, between Steve Burton, the CEO of the College and Career Academy, and Ms. Teresa Bishop, the work, work-based learning instructor, they have just been amazing partners, including the counselors at the high school, really all of the staff and faculty. We have been allowed to take staff, faculty, students, all alike, on industry tours for the last year. We've completed four tours so far, and we have another one scheduled for next Friday for Manufacturing Week. The pictures in front of you are various student tours, faculty tours. And then the bottom left is the picture from, we did a College and Career Academy tour with our Industry Roundtable event with our resource partners. Upcoming events will be covered shortly, but these are some of the events we've held throughout the year, the Workforce Wednesdays, just so you can kind of see. We've started a newsletter that'll go out quarterly. And upcoming events, so these are things still planned moving forward. Again, October 3rd, we've covered the manufacturing appreciation reception. I couldn't encourage everyone to come more. It'll be the first time we've tried an event like that, so we hope for a really good turnout. Again, we've got Manufacturing Week. Our next JDA community presentation for state project managers is scheduled for October 7th. Good News Gathering is an economic development meeting where it's a regional meeting where good news is shared throughout all of the communities of what's been going on in economic development. We have another state project manager tour coming, October 28th and 29th. And then December 10th, we have the Be Pro, Be Proud Bus and Trailer coming to the high school. Has anyone heard of that on the board? It's, they use a large 40, 50-foot trailer to use virtual reality that highlights the top 10 high-demand trade careers in the state of Georgia. And then you can actually customize it to what your needs are in your community. So, there's everything from manufacturing to linemen to commercial truck drivers, construction, anything and everything, heavy equipment operator. And so, we can see 130 kids can come through this bus in one day. And in addition, they will allow any board members from Board of Education, College and Career Academy Board, you guys, any board, any local leadership can actually come and not be counted against the 130 kids that can walk through. So, again, if that's something you're interested in. And then finally, for June 2026, we're kicking off the first Hart Connects Educator externship program. We are, we have funded the first year, and I've been allowed to seek additional grants or funding for remaining years. We hope to have five to six educators this year. We're going to keep it in the College and Career Academy or the high school level. Any type of faculty or educators will actually partner and be embedded in our business and industry for a week after their post-planning. And the goal is just to connect education, our educators with all of our industry and business so that they can see what actually happens as they are teaching our students about these opportunities. They can actually create better relationships with our industry partners and use that to apply to their teaching. Whether, and the goal is to expand that out to all K through 12 teachers in the coming years. And that is all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, any questions? I'm happy to answer. Very proud of, it's been a great partnership and collaboration effort across a lot of different entities, so I've been very thankful for that.
I've said you've been very busy.
Yeah. Thank you for your work, Terry, and also congratulations on the year. I know it's been a task of learning different skills and, and learning new things. And I think Commissioner said in the beginning, we've got a lot of confidence in you, and it, and it's showing. So, we appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to reports by constitutional officers.
Last meeting, I reported to you all that the statewide election case in all of those counties were under, had won, and then there was a notice of appeal filed. You must have been listening to your YouTube channel because they withdrawn the notice of appeal this week, so maybe I'm teasing, but it is a great, it's just a great development that we are not driven back into that litigation anymore. It is over now. I did respond to Chief Belts, Chief Judge Belts, about the court order situation and told them that you all were supporting and that we definitely sought a solution and that we just reminded them that we wanted it to be fair across all five counties. And then I've not heard back from June of quarter, potential more placement for the chair's process here. So, it's a little bit early. Maybe that'll come.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. All right, we'll move on to county administration's report.
Just a couple things. We're running close here on the budget, the minute rate setting. I haven't received the paperwork yet from Karen. We may have to have a call meeting at some point. We need to at least approve the budget before the end of the month. Hopefully, I'll have the digest, so we can do it all. You gotta, we can go ahead and have the public here and approve the budget. Then we can come back and yell our previous draft, minute rate, and all that stuff, so I can advertise, all that kind of stuff.
Has the school system set their minute rate yet?
They can't. None of us can.
The digest has.
Till we get the digest. It was uploaded Friday.
So, they're going to be in the same boat we're in.
They're in the same boat, correct.
So, we just got the rest of this month?
Yeah, October 1st.
Again, we can go ahead and do our budget.
Budget, budget.
That, that keeps the government open, as they say. And we'll set the minute rate when we get the, when we get the correct documentation. I can't do it until I got the exact numbers. So, just, just kind of keep your heads up in the paper, figure that you're something in my hand. I'll, I'll make the call. Shouldn't take long to do it, come in, do the draft, minute rate, so I can start advertising it. And then we'll come back and weaken and final approve it all. But that's all I have.
All right, thank you. As far as Chairman's report, yeah, I'd like to say that I appreciate each one that takes part in the county offices or EMS, road department, all of our employees, and even the voluntary employees. But there's one thing we've had added this, well, last month, it started, but we get a monthly newsletter, and I like a monthly newsletter and I'd like to do a shout out to, for Alyssa, for the job she does on that. She spends a lot of time on that and she's going through different departments and putting news articles in there pertaining to the county, and I'd just like to give her a shout out for the excellent job she's doing with that. Like I said, it takes all of us to make this train go down the track, you know, so I'd just like to say, appreciate all the county employees that we have here. And with that said, we'll move on to District 1. Commissioner Bennett?
I really don't have anything, but as I said in my prayer, it takes a lot of people to make the wheels go around in this county. Many don't realize it, hundreds. And I'd like to thank them once again, everybody doing the great job they do. This board managing, we do a great job with Hart County. We've got great people and just a great place to live. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Move District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
I'll tell you when I echo what the Chairman and Commissioner Bennett said about our county employees. I appreciate all of them and all of our public safety workers and the job that they do. And they, they keep us safe and keep our community going and appreciate the job that all of them do.
District 4, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, nothing that I could say or I couldn't do it justice, me putting into words, but I'd be reminisced if I didn't take the time to just recognize really the time that our country's been through since we've met last. A lot has changed. This country's changed and, you know, September 11th is always a somber time for all of us, but this year even more so, you know, right after the events of Charlie Kirk being murdered and assassinated. And it's just brought on a lot of feelings in our country and I'm thankful for a lot of it. I'm thankful for the local party having a candlelight vigil this past week, well-attended, and it was just great to see everyone come together. And that was just a small event comparison to what's taking place across our country as we've seen millions of our citizens come out and, and just lift up the name of Jesus. And it's so refreshing as we look back Sunday and we see the entire executive branch at this memorial and professing, you know, our Lord and Savior. And just, it's a tough time, but so much good has come from this. I've seen a statistic where Turning Point USA already had 60,000 new chapters started across the country in high schools. That was just high schools. Over 200 million people watched that service Sunday and, you know, it was a celebration. It was a celebration of Jesus Christ and, and what he means and what he's doing in this country. And Charlie just happened to be the guy that was delivering the message and I just want to have the time to honor him and what he's done and, you know, thankful for what's going on in the country and hopefully we can stay on this path and keep moving forward in the right direction. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
Y'all pretty much so said everything that needs to be said. I'd like to echo everybody's sentiments and I agree especially with Commissioner Brown and what's transpired in our country. And you go back to September 11th, it's a day that nobody will ever forget and just, just that our freedoms continually get, are attacked. And it's just sad and it's, it's problematic for me to sit and watch and see some of the things that's going on, but I'm gonna leave it at that. And I do also thank all of our employees and again, Alyssa and her efforts to spearhead this newsletter. I think that's really good because we've got a lot of departments that don't ever interact with each other and this goes out countywide and people get to see it, so I think that's great. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Old Business 12A Tattoo and Body Piercing Ordinance. Can we take this as the third and final reading tonight?
Motion to take Tattoo and Body Piercing Ordinance for the third and final reading.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, the second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, that's five oh. All right, we'll move on to the bid opening for recreation basketball uniforms.
We got a bid from Hall of Fame Sports, basketball jerseys, youth size $24, adult size $24. That's all we got on here. There's no addendums or anything.
This right here, some go sports, youth jersey $22.50, adult $22.50. That's all I see on here.
We got a bid here from Hayen Incorporated DBA, let's play sports. We got basketball jerseys, youth size $17.95, adult size $17.95. Got Adware and Specialty of Texas Incorporated, youth size $37.11, adult size $37.11, that's for uniforms. They list the brand as Champero, Champro Sports. They do have a list of references. And that's it.
All right, we got a motion, attorney there with the Rec Department and County Administrator.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, that's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on to Public Works Director Job Description. This is the same one we had last week that you just, yeah.
Just going through this, we've got conflicts with the county employee handbook. Some of the duties in here that are delegated to this person. It's not, I mean, there's some conflicts.
Well, what I saw in it, I think Bullet Point 6, coordinates public works resources, responds to urgent repair and cleanup situations in the county. My question to that, would he, this person be taking over like when we had the chicken flu or when we have the storms, would that, would he play that role?
Not the EMA.
Okay. Then down in Bullet Point 12, serves as fleet manager for all county departments, including supervising equipment maintenance and program preparation of equipment specifications. Is this gonna involve the fire department as far as like?
No, no.
Okay. All right, now I have one more over here. Top of the page two of that description, knowledge of county waste collection, county infrastructure maintenance and repair of roads and bridges. Is this gonna be serving, I'm just asking this question because it's not clear to me. Is this guy gonna be serving as, like, we ride the roads, we're not gonna be riding the roads anymore?
That's what y'all, well, that's entirely.
Is he going to tell us what roads are the worst, needs paving, needs striping, what curbs need to be cleaned out or whatever on that end of that, on that, in that perspective? That's my question.
That person will be giving you their opinion, just like I give you my opinion on things, what y'all action takes us to.
It just says he has to have the knowledge of it.
Well, yeah, I get that too.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, yeah, I get that too, but it's at the top of the heading, it says essential functions. And then the other heading says knowledge and skills and competencies. But I'm thinking this all will fall under the same category. And but my questions are getting answered here by you guys.
Basically, the qualification, this is an engineer.
Yeah, well, I saw that on the back page there as well.
And again, as an engineer, he will give you, he or she will give you their expertise, opinion on things, the final decision's always to the board.
That's all I had on there.
So there's just a lot of things in here that we don't do. For example, like five bullet points up from the bottom, administers and supervises the land use development standards ordinance, erosion control program. We don't do any erosion control, that's strictly through the EPD. We don't do any permitting, that's all, it all goes to the state level. Coming on up, it talks about soliciting bids. He doesn't solicit bids, this board approves going out for bid and that kind of thing. Setting work hours that has, he can recommend, that has to come through us. It just needs to be a little bit of cleanup is what I'm getting, so we don't have conflicts. One question that I do have about this, we talk, it talks about roads, maintenance shop, solid waste. My question, Terrell, would, and I'm asking this, in my opinion, I think it fits. I think risk management goes under this person.
If you could, absolutely. I saw that in here, I'm not sure where I read it.
But all the emergency services stuff will not be under this person.
Yeah, if they do.
There needs to be under knowledge and skills and competencies. I think there needs to be an understanding of OSHA requirements and regulations.
I agree with that.
There's no mention of that here. There's just some other thing. It just needs to be cleaned up. There's a lot of things in this thing that's very detailed, but I just, I'm not ready to approve it tonight. I think we gotta go back and review some of our policies and make sure we don't have a conflict here as well as our county handbook, employee handbook. Not that it can't be done, I mean, it's just gonna take a little time. My personal opinion is I think we, we do have in here a PE registration, the state of Georgia is preferred. I would like to see us pursue somebody with a PE, that is a PE, that can do a lot of engineering stuff that we're currently contracting out. And I guess my thoughts are that we, we have preferred, we say required, you might not get anybody, I don't know, but I, I think that's where we really need to focus.
The five we've had have all been PEs in the past.
I think it's just that I have been in the can.
But that's just some of the things that I saw. And one other thing is this person needs to understand their own call 24/7. And I don't think that's clearly stated in here. Just my thoughts and what I've seen.
I don't think we can put in here necessarily and or do I feel like there's necessarily need to detail it, but something for us to think about is as we pursue this applicant and as we, you know, go through the resumes and go through the interview process of what expertise do we want them to have and to lean on? Because, you know, even me, for instance, before I got in this, you're just thinking engineer is an engineer. Well, that's not the case. I mean, it's just like a doctor, lawyer, they all have their specialties. So do these engineers, so do we want to lean towards someone who's gonna bring foresight and wisdom on GDOT road, bridge specifications, or do we want someone on site development utilities? And I don't think we, we would lose either way as far as their specialty because I think that they can gain knowledge where needed, we can support them as we see other counties doing, offering support to their public works directors. But I just want to throw that out there that that's something that's kind of enlightened, been enlightening me and I just want to share with the rest of the board that, you know, just because we hire an engineer, obviously they're not gonna be 100% versed in everything. And, you know, this is something you wouldn't put in there either, but just me personally, I mean, I want someone who's, like Commissioner Dorsey was kind of alluding to, someone ready to work. I'm not looking for someone that, oh, this is a lake, I'm gonna come and, you know, fill out a five-year plan and retire. We need somebody who's committed, driven, and is ready to bring the utmost efficiency in, in our government and in these departments. And I'm not saying that they need to come in and, you know, I guess, micromanage or throw anybody off because we have great department heads that's doing a great job, but we want, we want someone to come in here that's ready to work and is, and I guess has the experience but has the willingness to work and to get after it. We don't want to find somebody that's just looking to hang out at the lake for a few years before they retire. Because I hear that a lot when we go to different events, government-wide and statewide. It's, OSHA would like to get a job up in Hart County right before I retire. It's like, well, we don't want to catch them on the end, we want to catch them when they're good, you know? Now, Terrell, you're anomaly because you just work hard, you know, even though you...
I just would catch somebody in the middle if they don't got to sell somewhere.
They don't make them like you anymore, Terrell.
Is there a residency requirement in here?
You can't legally do that unless you've got a contract.
Residency requirement, is it in here?
No, you have to put them on the contract to live.
Okay.
Again, how much, how much difference in what y'all going towards out of this than what we had in the original?
There's not more detail in here.
But again, is that what you're looking for, less detail or more detail?
I would like to get a big, to get the biggest pull we can, of course. I don't, I don't want us to get two in the weeds and then us have two applicants. And we may only have a handful of applicants, but of course you want to be able to get the best. And I think to get the best, we have to have a wide net here, which I don't want to throw anybody away because I care less about the resume. I'd rather have someone who's gonna work hard and be competent. That beats resume every day. So I don't want to deter someone just because they feel like, oh, I may not have.
Well, if I'm saying if we get real, absolute benefit to teach specific, you may just get there. I mean, I don't know.
I think there's some things in here that can be cleaned up a little bit and straightened, I mean trimmed, because there is some overlapping.
I mean, basically, from what I've seen with other counties, the public work director, the public work director, everybody does, does basically the exact same thing in every county.
But our goal here, I think, my understanding of that goal, my, my thoughts of the goal for this person is to be the lead candidate in a succession plan to take your place when you retire or when you leave or whatever.
I mean, that could or couldn't work.
But developing that candidate to do that so that if, when you're out, we've got somebody that can fill in. I know you never are, but, you know, if you and Judy decide y'all want to go on a vacation or somewhere, we got somebody who can fill in on these areas.
That was my thoughts as well, that he would be in training.
Well, but it's two different worlds. I mean, me and John was a little odd, but in a lot of means.
The succession planning part would be secondary to the day-to-day operations that this person will be overseeing.
And we had a unique relationship over the years. I pulled part of the load off of John, which it's, it's hard for any one person to do all this and do it right. I don't get anything done, I just put fires there. I mean, that's just the way it is. But again, you gotta find somebody that may have that trait, may have that trait and want to do that. Some, some will, some won't.
But you have somebody in that position, you need to be able to look at them and see where they, where it might meet the requirements maybe later on.
That's true, I mean, that's true. Once I'm gone, y'all be yours.
I agree with that.
All right, so we'll not take any action tonight on the Public Works Director Job Description. We'll move on to 13A New Business Request for Bid Tanker for Fire Department.
Oh, yeah, well, we've looked for, what, almost two years trying to find some decent used tankers and there don't appear to be any out there that don't want as much for them, but they're any good that you could buy a uniform. So we found a couple of companies that build them. The price I've seen on them look reasonable. But again, we'll have to, we need to bid them out.
But again, we'll have to, we need to bid them out so everybody can, there's no state contract on them, so that's out of the question. So we send out a bid and see what we get back, see if we can find something that'll serve our purpose and be a reasonable price to.
I'll make a motion to put this out for bid, the new tankers.
I got a question.
All right.
I, I'll second it. But like on this, like on these tanker trucks, is this something that's gonna help us on the, I know we talked about it a few meetings ago about ISO rating.
Correct. That was one of our deficiencies, a lack of adequate tank.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion, questions at this time?
Yeah, I want, I want to make a change to this. So to keep confusion down, if you look at the fifth paragraph down, it says also please show the following on the outside of the envelope. We need to say not please show, you shall show. So we know it's a bid for what it is and we don't get into this stuff. It also says on here, any late bids will be rejected. Not that we got anything else out there, but just so.
What if it comes in a box?
So now, changing the package.
Well, it says envelope.
Yeah. I don't disagree. I don't disagree. But outside of the package that it comes in should be, that should be labeled, but... Gene was trying to be nice and pleasant.
Yeah, I know.
I read that, but I didn't see a lot telling it.
Because the last bid, we got them more in boxes.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's on the package, they got a marked package. Gene stamps them as they come in and puts the timestamp on them.
All right, any other?
Did we get a vote on it?
Yeah, we had a first and a second.
We got a motion to say we haven't voted yet, it's in discussion. All right, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? That's five oh. All right, then we'll move on to request for credit experience EMS.
Mike's gonna address you, but he had a call, he had to leave, so I'll stick there. We request him for a paramedic full-time hire that was part-time. Mike requested given experience for four years, retroactive to the date he went full-time. I'm not sure what that is. Mike?
That's May.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
So he does have four years of experience? Yes, he does. He had probably 10 years, I think, or less than another service. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Make it retroactive to a higher date.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? That's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on, request for credit experience in jail.
Yeah, the sheriff's request, we'll give a new certified dealer for experience for four years. And that, I don't know when he was hired, but just make it retro to his higher date.
I make a motion, we'll approve this request by the sheriff.
I'll give you a second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley.
Same question there, he does have four years.
Sure, they verify all this experience, it ain't just...
Yeah, they ain't throwing it out there.
And just, just so y'all know, most time we give 50% of credit, figure out eight years of credit we're giving for. Just for a simple fact, it's not fair to the employees you already got here, it's been your eight years to give them that kind of credit. So usually what you see on our reaction for is about a 50%.
I've noticed that, I have noticed that.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? That's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to a request for credit experience for dispatch, sheriff's office dispatch.
Dispatch, he's requesting give Heather Mooney four years of credit. So moved.
Second.
Do you want to be retroback to her higher date, whatever that was?
All right, motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? That's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to authorization to sign.
Yes, it's, it's the end of the fiscal year, it's time to start the audit again. And every year we have to do an engagement letter where we engage all the officials to do the audit. And what it is authorized to chairman to sign, it's the commissioner.
Second.
Needs to sign it.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? That's five oh vote. All right, now we'll come to item, public comment. Anyone here would like to speak on county business? All right, if not, can we get a motion to exec, to exiting to executive session for litigation personnel in real estate?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor? That's five oh vote. Thank you for being here tonight.